March 12th, 2018. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Marnie, will you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Polika?
Here.
Councilmember Piana? And Mayor Coulter.
I'd like to move that we excuse the absence of Mayor Coulter and Councilwoman Piana.
Support.
Okay, moved and supported. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Even though with their absence, we do have a quorum today, so the next item would be the approval of the agenda.
Your Honor, I'd like to amend the agenda to add Presentation B. Our State Representative, Robert Wittenberg, is here.
Support.
Moved and supported. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Marnie, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Polika?
Yes. And that passes. First order of business is a presentation by People Movers Community Network. Do we have an introduction to that? Chief?
Yes, sir. Mayor Pro Tem, we have with us tonight Keith Zentler. He was a Ferndale High graduate, and it came to me, it was a little weird. The secretary said, "A guy from People Movers wants to talk to you." I said, "Well, the thing doesn't even come close to Ferndale." What did he want to talk to me for? But he has this project, People Movers, and he'd like to see if Ferndale would be interested in getting on the ground floor, so I thought I'd bring it to council so everyone can see what it is. But for emergency management, it's a pretty profound thing. I think it'll be a very good thing to have, and I think as being a creative community and accepting community, it might be something we would like to be on the ground floor with. So without further ado, I'll let Keith take over and tell you what it's all about.
Thanks, Chief Sullivan. It is really an honor to be here again, being a Ferndale grad from that famous class of '84, which I know nobody has forgotten about, but there were actually four Zentlers that came to Ferndale schools, and we had two valedictorians, although I wasn't one of them. But it is an honor. And I remember back when the biggest excitement in downtown Ferndale was the new McDonald's and the aquarium, if any of you remember that. But, you know, it's really amazing to see what you all have done with the city and how it's grown. So I want to talk to you tonight about People Movers, and yes, Chief brought out, it's not the people mover, we like to say we're actually going somewhere, but People Movers is an internet company that specializes in civic technology. As you can see right here, really, our mission is to create a platform that allows leaders and organizations like yourselves to be able to work together and engage your constituencies much more effectively. I've been an entrepreneur for about 30 years in the recycling and environmental space, and then for the last 20 years have worked with leaders of all types in the community development world. And one of the things that we saw over and over again is that no matter what kind of organization or what kind of leader, whether it was government or nonprofit, you know, there's a lot of different entities that are working on building communities, and Detroit has been the basket, you know, the role model, or I should say, the global model of a challenged community. But what we saw over and over again was that leaders needed a better way of working together. And so that's really where this whole project was born, actually about 10 years ago. So our solution was to create a network where cities and nonprofits and police departments and fire departments and all type business communities can actually work together to share information, their news, their events, their initiatives, and start to really create a global or a local database. But here was kind of the magic of it all. It would interconnect, and it does interconnect your network with the network of all your other entities that you're connected to. So one of the challenges, I think, as you know, is that we get a lot of silos with organizations. And so we set out to solve that problem. This wasn't something we just kind of dreamed up. If you get kind of a sense of a lot of the organizations that have been involved in this, it's actually over about 1,500 organizations. This originally started working with Mayor Bing and the city of Detroit, but we really listened to what leaders like you need. I should also mention that I was that first busload of kids that was busting to Grant School, you know, way back when Ferndale led the way in the desegregation of the schools. And I think I've always been challenged with this issue of how can we all just work together to create stronger communities? And that's where this comes from. So People Movers has this network that you would, very similar to like Facebook or LinkedIn, but it's focused on cities and leaders like yourselves. There's no noise. It's very clear information, the kind of information that you would share tonight, but want to get out to your other organizations and leaders. And we've created a whole suite of platforms of apps that are coming that are really going to take this to the next level for cities. You hear a lot about smart cities. This is really, we think, going to be the next global platform for that. I actually spent three years in India, working with their former president and a number of leaders there, and we think that this is something the world needs. So what I want to talk to you about specifically is one app, and it's called People Prep. As you're aware, there's a number of challenges. I actually first became aware of this because I was, I'd seen a special on EMPs or electromagnetic pulses. If you're familiar with that, I mean, they can totally devastate not only the grid but the, an entire country. And I'm terrified, and I started thinking about this, you know, how are we prepared for this? And I started asking some of our city leaders in Detroit and other leaders. I said, you know, what do you, what kind of emergency plans do we have for this kind of stuff? I don't know. You know, I mean, we have, most of our cities, I'm sure, have emergency plans. They're in a really nice binder somewhere, or maybe they make it into a website, but the challenge is, how do you get your constituencies? How do you get the business community? How do you get cities? How do you get schools? All engaging with this material and really learning from it? And that's what People Prep will solve. So as you can see, you've got a whole lot of different situations, and I think this past year has seen, you know, headlines with so many of them, whether it's wildfires or flooding. You've got, of course, active shooter situations, but then there's the day-to-day emergencies, the health emergencies that come. And all of these situations, we need to prepare our citizens to be able to face. And there's a lot of different entities, as you know, that need to be part of the solution, that all need to work together. And so getting that information all together in one place, getting all the resources connecting together in one place is the challenge. So our solution is an app that connects all of you organizations around this issue of emergency preparation. So you see a screenshot there. But essentially, the concept is, is that each government, each, the Chamber of Commerce, the school districts, they can all create their own emergency networks, almost like instantly, because we already have preloaded emergency procedures for about 50 scenarios. But the neat thing is, again, their emergency networks can all interconnect to you and to each other, so you're not creating this redundant situation. Or a situation where, again, you have silos. They all can connect together on the same platform. So again, as you can see here, they can create their own emergency plans for a variety of situations, and then they can add new situations as it goes. They can create networks to share information. This is not, by the way, a first responders' network. This is really designed to engage everybody else before a situation happens and helping them prepare, and then after an emergency happens and connecting resources after the fact. You get things like notifications, alerts as various situations happen, as the plans update and change. Leaders like yourselves can have a dashboard on everything that's happening, so you can see the percentage of readiness that's, your city's in, so that's a very powerful thing. And then you can actually connect to cities all around the world and other leaders to share best practices, find out what they're doing, and even compare data. Now, one thing that's really going to make this unusual and very fun is we've created a rewards program called People Points. And the idea here is that, I mean, this is all the vegetables, right? I mean, getting people to prepare for situations that are maybe way off. So this is the spoonful of sugar to get the medicine to go down. So People Points is a way for the business community and other entities to put rewards out on the network, and then as students and as citizens, take little quizzes, prepare, they do, they fill out their emergency plans online, they get points. And then they can use those points to shop in the downtown area. So they might get a cup of coffee at one of the coffee places, they might have something at the corner. It can be all kinds of fun, different creative things that the business community can get involved in. But the idea here is it's a way to create rewards for people to prepare and be better and respond. So we have a number of use cases, as you can see from our presentation, whether they're businesses or buildings, they would be connected, they would need their own plans. Again, they can all interconnect, utilities, hospitals, schools. One of the discussions lately has been just how schools can be better connected to other entities in the community to catch potential problems before they show up with a gun in their door. So it's a way to get everybody working together. It really goes way beyond what you've got in your traditional social media. If you're, if you use social media, you know that it's kind of hit or miss who's going to get the information. This is really your own network for the city of Ferndale to do a lot more than just put posts out there and get likes. It really takes you to the next level. You could create a custom website and get some of this functionality, but it's the interconnectivity that's really the magic in all of this. So to wrap it up, the game plan for this is we're at about 80% of having the app done. We think we're going to be able to have everything ready within the next 60 to 90 days. And what we're proposing to cities at this stage is for you to become a founding partner. And what that basically means is we'd like you to pre-purchase People Points that are going to go into your account, that you can then use to basically fund all the promotions. But those People Points are basically, you know, the purchase of that is what's going to allow us to essentially crowdfund this app. So we're speaking to a number of cities at this stage right now and getting, you know, pretty good response. But anyway, we're also then going to grandfather the city of Ferndale, and you would receive all of the other premium functionality at no charge for the life of our platform. And we are very excited to have you as founding sponsor number one. Of course, that would be near and dear to my heart. It would give me no greater pride and joy than to say Ferndale took the lead on this. If anybody remembers me from high school, I never thought small. And I think that, based on what we've seen already, the appetite by leaders is there. They need this network. The enthusiasm globally, we've been working in New York a lot over the past year. We know that this is a network that, whose time has come, and we want Ferndale to be the leader. And so we're very excited to work with all of you and Chief Sullivan, so hoping. At that point, I'll stop, and any questions?
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. From council, any questions? Anyone from the audience have any questions? Okay. It's a very interesting program. I think it's not something that we can decide on tonight, obviously, but I'm sure Chief will provide us with more information, and we'll also have the other members of council, the mayor and Councilwoman Piana, review the information as well. So thank you very much.
I'd support that. I think it warrants further discussion, but I'd like to carry the ball forward and look at it more further.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Presentation 4B, which is our fantastic State Representative, Robert Wittenberg. It's always great to see you.
I'm sorry, let me get out of your way. Hello there. Fantastic, I appreciate that. That's very kind of you. So just wanted to come say hello and then have two announcements, I should say. I have a town hall coming up, so we've had a town hall, we usually do one town hall a year. You know, we do our coffee hours, our community conversations, do usually two of those a month and then one big event. And we, in 2015, we did one on redistricting and gerrymandering. In 2016, we did one on graduated income tax proposal that I've been working on and tax fairness here in the state of Michigan. Last year, we did one on how to get involved with, you know, different nonprofit organizations and different groups in the community, how to engage your government, which was a really successful one. And this year, we have a town hall on how the federal tax changes will impact you. So we know that the, you know, Congress passed their tax changes at the end of last year. And so this is a program where we're going to have some experts there. We'll actually go through how it's going to impact people here in Michigan. And Congressman Levin will be there, which will be great. And then we have someone from the University of Michigan, the Gerald Ford School of Public Policy, and then a couple people from the Michigan League for Public Policy, which is an organization, if people know Gilda Jacobs, who, you know, was our state senator, state representative years ago. She heads up that organization, and so they're great. So that town hall's coming up Wednesday, March 28th, from 6:30 to 8:00. Doors will open at 6:00, but it'll be from 6:30 to 8:00 at the Berkeley High School Collaborative Center. We used, we seem to host a lot there. It's a really great space. If anyone's been there before, it's just a really open space, and we can get a lot of people in there, and it's really easy to access. So that's why we're hosting it there. So that's one thing. The other thing is our community conversations. We had one here in Ferndale just the other day, actually, March 7th, which was, what, a week ago on Wednesday? We had a really good turnout. There was a really good group of people that were there. We had a nice discussion. Everyone is different. All the, all the community conversations are different. It depends who's in the audience and what the questions are and what we go over. So it was a really nice discussion. So thank you to all that attended, and then we have more coming up. The next one will be not until April now, because we had two here in March, but we have one April 16th, 2:00 PM, at the Royal Oak Township, 21131 Garden Lane. And then April 17th, which is a Tuesday, at Berkeley Library at 6:30 PM. And then the last one, May 14th, at the Pleasant Ridge Community Center at 10:00 AM. And then we'll start over again. We go through all seven communities and then, and then do it again. So those were the things I wanted to mention, and just a brief update on what's going on in Lansing. We're in budget season, so the governor came out with, with his budget proposal, and then, then the legislative process, the appropriations process happens in Lansing, so his budget will probably look a lot different by the time it actually gets signed into law. I don't serve on the appropriations committee, so I actually won't have a chance to vote on the budget until it comes to the House floor for, you know, for a vote for, for all members. But I'm obviously staying, you know, keeping tabs on what's going on with my colleagues that do serve on the appropriations committee. And I know, you know, two of our biggest issues, there are quite a few, but municipal finance and making sure our communities, you guys don't keep getting cut and cut and cut, which you have been doing for years and years, unfortunately, but trying to do the best we can to protect, you know, revenue sharing for you, and additionally, for our school aid fund, and making sure that our schools have the resources they need. So those are kind of the two big issues, and I don't want to belabor and go over too many things this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions about it, but, so that's, that's the big thing going on now. And then one thing I just want to touch on is something that I've been working pretty closely on. I am, I'm the chair, I started, and I'm the chair of our Gun Violence Prevention Caucus here in Michigan, and we've been working, and we started that caucus back in 2016. And so there's a lot of common sense legislation that we've introduced to try to mitigate gun violence here in the state. Unfortunately, we haven't got a hearing on any of the bills we've introduced. And then unfortunately, again, after the shooting in Parkland, Florida, just, you know, a few weeks ago, people are now saying, oh, we should, we should look at some of our laws here in Michigan and see what we can do. And there was a bill that I introduced, or a couple bills, but it's what's called an extremist protection order. Some states are calling them red flag laws, but we, I introduced this last session, so a year or two ago, and then most recently introduced it in June of just this last year. So it wasn't like a knee-jerk reaction to what happened. People were trying to say that that's what was going on, but we've been working on this for a long time, and it's on the books in five other states. In essence, what it does is a person is a threat or a danger to themselves or others, and they have a weapon. With due process, a judge can grant an order, but we're able to temporarily seize the weapon from that person. And so I think that's really important to be able to do. If someone is, you know, is threatening that, you know, that they're going to harm themselves or harm someone else, we have to take them seriously and get them the help they need and, you know, seize the weapons from them. The governor's actually come out to say that this is something that he supports, which I appreciate him saying that. I don't know what's going to happen because the legislative leaders have not come out to really endorse this. I'm trying to have conversations. I've been working with the chair of the committee. It was sent to the judiciary committee, so I've been having conversations with the chair of the committee to try to get a hearing. So we're having discussions. He hasn't promised me anything, but we are having discussions and hoping that we can actually advance this. And I tell people, you know, we, we need to be proactive. I don't want to be reactive. I don't want, you know, after another tragedy or another mass shooting happens that we're saying, well, what could we have done to try to prevent this? Well, we know there are things that have been implemented, these laws that have been implemented in other states that have, you know, mitigated the gun violence occurring in their state. And so I really, really want to see some of this get implemented here in Michigan, and we're working really hard on that. So that's, that's kind of just a brief update, you know, also working on universal criminal background checks and some other legislation. But this one now, the extremist protection order, seems to be getting the most traction as it was just passed in Florida as well. I didn't see the specifics, but it's the same idea. So it's something I can tell you I'm really working hard on. So I think with that, I don't want to take up too much time, but just wanted to come say hello and give you guys an update of what's going on and let everyone know about these events upcoming, and then answer any questions if you have any.
If I may through the chair, if I may.
Sure.
Can you characterize the extent of the NRA lobby effort at the state level? I think we all have heard enough about it at the federal level.
Yeah.
What's that activity look like in Lansing?
So I'll tell you on a smaller scale, on more direct, with my colleagues specifically. They don't, they don't play, my understanding is they don't give money to candidates directly, but they get involved with ads in races, and additionally, they endorse in races, and there's areas where you, if in order to win, you have to have the NRA's endorsement. So there's some areas in the state where they play a factor like that. Additionally, some of my colleagues, when I talked to them about some of these issues, like the chair of the committee, the judiciary, judiciary committee where this, this bill was sent to, said, well, you know, before you, I wanted to sit down with them, just the two of us, just to talk about the legislation, and he said, well, you know, we're just two guys, you know, what do we know? We need to have the experts there. I need the NRA to be in the room with us when we talk about it. And I'm saying to myself, well, we're, we're actually elected lawmakers here in the state of Michigan. We should be able to actually sit down and have this conversation.
Right.
And I've talked to some of my other colleagues who will not get involved, you know, will not support anything unless the NRA openly supports it. So I think that's the factor, you know, that's, that's kind of the impact they have in Lansing. Again, they don't, they don't donate directly to candidates, but I know they have a lot of money that they get involved with, I guess you would call it, issue advocacy. So I hope, I think that kind of answers your question.
It certainly does. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, of course. I know that's something, I don't get along very well with the NRA, I can tell you that.
I wasn't trying to suggest you.
No, no, I know, I know. You know, I do know they're, you know, they're lobbyists. I, I reach out, again, as the Gun Violence Prevention Caucus Chair, you know, I try to get everyone in the room and have these conversations and see, kind of get the other perspective on things. And so I have, you know, a relationship with, with the, is like a multi-state lobbyist who works in a few different states, and they've had a few throughout the years that I've been serving, but I always reach out to them. We don't agree ever, really. I think there's, I think there's been one time where we actually agreed on an issue, which was pretty interesting. But again, I like to get, on every issue, I like to do my research and get all sides.
Of course.
So, but thank you for, yeah, asking that. Anything else?
I don't think so.
Thank you. Thank you guys very much.
Continue doing the great work you are up in Lansing.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next order of business is call to audience. This is a time where anyone from the public may speak to council on any topic that is not on the agenda this evening. You'll have the opportunity to speak to that item at that time. You'll have up to three minutes to address the issue. We ask that you please state your name and address. And ma'am?
Hi, I'm Patricia Sissel. I'm representing Renaissance Vineyard Church at 1841 Pine Crest in Ferndale. I'd like to invite everyone and announce our second annual fish fry coming up this Friday, March 16th, and also the second week would be March 23rd. And it'll be held at the church at 1841 Pine Crest. Doors open at 4:30 PM, and doors will close at 7:00 PM. $10 for a plated meal, $5 for a plated sandwich meal, and we look forward to everyone to come out and support our endeavor to put more funds towards our roof repair fund. So we look forward to everyone coming, and thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you.
If I may through the chair, the second date was the 23rd? Is that right?
March 16th and March 23rd.
Okay, great.
This coming Friday and the one after.
I'll be there. I love a fish fry.
It's great, thanks.
Anyone else? We have our DDA Director, Barry.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. I am not formally on your agenda to make a presentation tonight, but I just wanted to give you a couple of announcements briefly here. First of all, I wanted to thank those people who were able to participate in the Main Street evaluation this year. The feedback was very valuable. Everything went favorably, and in years past, Oakland County has actually held an event for accreditation where we typically have to travel somewhere, but they will actually be coming to each community this year to make a presentation and hand out awards. So I have more information about that. I suspect it won't be until at least April, at the absolute soonest, or possibly afterwards. Also, I know that you're in the middle of budget season right now, so is the DDA. We just made a couple of amendments to our current fiscal year. I was scheduled to come in and speak this month on our budget. Unfortunately, we will be out of town during your next council meeting, so we're going to come back in April to make that presentation. And on that note, in case it's any inconvenience to anybody, I do apologize in advance, the week of March 26th, the DDA office is closed, as we will be at the National Main Street Conference with some of our new board members.
Where is it this year?
This year, it is in Kansas City.
Oh.
Yeah, it'd be my first time there, so if anybody knows any good barbecue places, I'm open to suggestions. Also coming up, this is getting way ahead on your calendar, but just so you know, on May 10th, the Main Street Awards will be held at the Strand Theater in Pontiac that evening. The time has not been announced, but if it's anything like in previous years, it'll probably be around 6:00 or 6:30 PM. We're looking for nominations. We have a few, but if you have any nominations, you can turn them in by March 26th. If you'd like to know what those categories are, I'd be happy to email out the packet that explains what each one of those are if you haven't already received one. And then I just want to touch on a couple of kind of maintenance items. I know coming up here on your consent agenda, you have some information from the interim Director of Public Works about maintenance. I've also received several comments through the city manager's office, as well as through the See Click Fix app, which seems to be working pretty well and getting issues reported. We are getting those and tracking those issues that have to do with downtown maintenance items like trash and graffiti and things, and we're very aware of that. In the years past, just due to our declining budget, we've had to make a few cutbacks here and there. However, this year, I've been working with our landscape maintenance contractor to try to do something to increase some of the amount of flowers and plantings and things we have, as well as do some power washing and things at some point during the summer, hopefully in the spring, in fact, if we can get things taken care of that quickly, just to kind of get things cleaned up a little bit, remove some gum from sidewalks, things that have been deferred maintenance probably for about the last three years. So I am receiving those comments, and we're working on some of those items. Last week, the DDA did approve the amended budget to help accommodate some of that stuff. So we're working on those things, but to, please keep sending me information. I count on everybody's eyes and ears in the community to help me know what's going on with those things. That's how we learn what needs to be addressed.
If I may through the chair.
Sure.
When you come to do your budget presentation, you mentioned your declining budget over the years. It would be helpful to see a comparison of the last five to 10 years or so and look at that trend. I know it would be educational for council and the public as well, so if you could include that in your presentation.
Absolutely, yeah. I will look back as far as we have information. I'll check on that.
All right, fair enough. That's fine.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
And then there's just some other projects going on right now that we're working on. Again, another one that came to the forefront where it was the crosswalks at Nine Mile and Woodward. and Woodward have been in a little bit of, uh, disrepair. They've been patched in over the years. We are currently working on looking at some solutions for what we could do. Um, there's a, a wide variety of cost options. We're just trying to narrow it in to make some kind of recommendation, give you guys a, an idea of, uh, what that would cost and what maintenance would be going forward and that sort of thing. Um, and, uh, also, uh, there was a survey that went out, uh, asking for people what movies they'd like to see this year on Vesture Street. Uh, you may not have received that survey, um, but, uh, if you do have any ideas, by all means, please give me an email and let me know.
Star Wars.
Got it. Star Wars. If it's not one that's been blacked out for that month, because sometimes they do that.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barry.
Thanks.
Yeah. Uh, if there isn't anything else, uh, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is items that council considers routine and we enact in one motion unless someone, uh, from council pulls an item for further discussion. Uh, so let me read those items. Uh, number six A is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting and work session held February 26th, uh, 2018 and the work session held March 5th, 2018. Uh, item B is adoption of the proclamation proclaiming April 27th, 2018 as Arbor Day. Uh, item C is approval of special events permit for the 100th annual anniversary, uh, I'm sorry, uh, 100th annual Memorial Day Parade, uh, Monday, May 28th, 2018. Um, B is addendum to the landscape maintenance hauling services, snow ice removal and graffiti removal contract effective February 27th, 2018. Uh, E is approval to appoint Carlos Kennedy as SACRA representative. Item F, approval to designate Carlos Kennedy as street administrator. Uh, item G is approval of the bills and payrolls as presented by the city manager's office. What are the, what is a pleasure of the consent agenda this evening?
I don't have any questions, but I'd like someone to read the proclamation. I mean, I can do it. It doesn't matter. Do you want to do that now or after?
Uh, why don't we, uh, uh, call it to a vote and then read it?
Then I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved and supported, uh, and you wanted to read the proclamation?
The proclamation is declaring April 27th, 2018 as Arbor Day in the city of Ferndale. And it reads, "The Ferndale Beautification Advisory Commission has enlisted the active support of the city's schools, churches, community, and civic organizations, business community, and individuals to make personal commitments and sacrifices to protect our environment and preserve our heritage of natural beauty. The city of Ferndale recognizes the importance of trees. It is to the advantage of all of us that our natural resources be preserved and enlarged by planting trees throughout the city, adding to its natural attractiveness of the city. We intend to demonstrate our responsibility to the commitment through the act of participation in a citywide Arbor Day observation. Now therefore be it resolved that we, members of the city council of the city of Ferndale, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 27th, 2018 as Arbor Day in Ferndale and urge all citizens to support the Ferndale Beautification Advisory Commission by planting trees so they can continue to be a constant reminder of a priceless gift that we must preserve for the generation, for this generation and for those ensuing." I just think that's important. One, because the topic's important. Two, our beautification commission rocks, so I just want to draw attention to that.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that, councilman. Uh, is there any other comments? If not, Marnie, call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Pollock.
Yes, and so that item passes. Um, the, uh, next item we have, uh, let's see, the, uh, we have the regular agenda and, uh, we have one item for consideration, uh, the Vector Truck Replacement. Uh, Carlos, are you, I'm not sure who's going to replace it.
I'll replace it.
Oh.
Good morning all. My name is Dan Harper. I'm the water supervisor. Um, as you see in the memo, our 19, 2007 Vector is in need of some desperate repairs. Um, they actually totaling almost, uh, $87,000. So I did some research and, uh, we came up with a demonstrator model. It's a 2016 Vector. It's never been in, put in use. It was traveled from a trade show to trade show. Uh, it's brand new, um, really good deal, uh, total price, $329,105. It's already been held through the NJPA contract, um, government bid, so, uh, it's something we really, really need. Uh, we have a six-year contract, 3.9%, uh, $60,227 per year, charged to the water sewer fund.
If I may through the chair, what, what do we do with the old one?
We traded it in.
Oh, we did already?
Yes.
Okay.
We still have another Vector we purchased from Hazel Park.
I remember, yeah.
We're strictly going to use that one to clean catch basins ahead of the West Nile, um, project.
Sure.
So we're having to have two crews out, one cleaning sewers, one cleaning catch basins.
Cool.
Thank you. I was going to bring that up. I thought a few, couple of years ago, we purchased a used one from Hazel Park, so that was going to be my question.
It's been quite a helpful piece of equipment, especially when the other one went down. We always have the backup for water main breaks or any type of catch basin repair.
Absolutely. Anyone, uh, from council have any questions?
No.
No?
No.
Uh, if not, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the purchase of a 2016 demonstrator sewer Vector governmental pricing through NJPA contract number 022014-FSC for $329,105 and that the expense be charged to the general fund water sewer capital account number 592000977.
Support.
Moved and seconded. Um, Marnie, will you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Pollock.
Yes, and so that passes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, that concludes our regular agenda this evening. Uh, moving on to call to council. Uh, Chi Collins, anything for the good of the public? Uh, Carlos, anything from DPW? Uh, parking, do we have any parking?
No good news.
Nope. No news is good news. Uh, Lorena, anything from Parks and Recreation?
Just a reminder that we have our extravaganza coming up on March 24th, um, which is right before the next council meeting. It'd be on Saturday and we're featuring five parks throughout Ferndale, which would be wind up, I'm sorry, Marie Todd Lot Park at 12:30. We, that's when it starts, as well as we have Geary, Wilson, Martin Road, of course, and Garbage Park. And we'll end the egg hunt at Martin Road Park at 2:30, where we'll have the bake sale that's be hosted by the seniors, as well as the Easter Bunny, um, and egg hunt. And at each park, we'll be having, giving out golden eggs that the children can find. And we've been getting an overwhelming response from our different departments and city council and the library, um, and DDA, who are donating baskets for those golden eggs. So we're very excited about that. Um, in addition, we're partnering with, um, Renaissance Vineyard Church for, um, the egg hunt at Martin Road Park. So we are looking for volunteers, so if anybody's interested, they can contact us at, um, the Kulik Center, 248-544-6767.
If I may through the chair, what does volunteering mean? I'm not going to end up in a bunny suit, am I?
You will not end up in a bunny suit. You would just, um, assist with scattering the eggs, um, and just picking, picking up any leftover eggs afterwards.
Okay, and so you, did you say that you start at Martin Road Park at what time, 4:00?
No, we're going to start at, um, Marie Todd Lot at 12:30 and it'd end at Martin Road Park at, uh, 2:30.
2:30.
So each park is, is in half hour increments, so 12:30, 1:01, 1:32, and 2:30.
And is all that on the website?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um, any other questions? I'm just curious, if the kids can't find the eggs, how do you expect any of us adults to find them afterwards?
Typically, we don't have any leftover eggs at all, so, but just in case, you know, we want to be prepared.
And I hear the, uh, council basket rocks.
All right.
The eggs typically are just kind of just spread out in the open for them to just run and go grab.
Yes.
You're ruining a Pollock family tradition of finding eggs on Memorial Day, so.
Anything else?
Nope, that'll be.
Great. Thank you so much. Uh, Chief?
Nothing here, you're on.
Anything from Communications?
Hello, I'm just going to do a quick shout out for our CED department because they are not here tonight. Um, as part of the ongoing, um, Ferndale's relationship with Build Institute, they're doing a, um, Spring Fling Into Networking series. And next Wednesday night is the second event. Um, it's called the 32nd First Impression Workshop. So, um, people are welcome to come and join this event. You're going to learn how to basically make an elevator speech for yourself professionally and learn how to network and build relationships at these kinds of events. Um, the event is free to come to. It's going to be next Wednesday, the 21st, um, 6:30 to 8:00 PM at the Ferndale Library. And there's no RSVP, no cost, anything like that. You can just show up. Um, information, if you're looking for it, we have flyer on our website as well as on our, um, Facebook page, so.
How was the attendance at the networking one?
You know, I don't know. I can't actually say.
Okay.
Mara has been, um, coordinating these and I was sick, so I wasn't able to attend it.
Oh, that's right.
But I saw pictures and it looks like it was pretty good.
Good.
Um, I think we probably had at least 25 people there.
Okay, nice, right.
So, yeah. And, and feedback so far from the attendees of all these events have been that it's been invaluable, that it's not just going and listening to information, but you're actually walking out with tips to use the next time you go into a professional networking event. So that's awesome.
Since they're not here tonight, I'll offer a compliment because I've had people from the public come and say how much they like the fact the city's investing in the development of our local businesses.
Yes.
Um, so the, the feedback even from non-business folks is it's money well spent, so.
They've been doing a great job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Don't tell them I said it.
No.
All right.[1641.76]